Thank you, Thaddeus Catholic Church. Is the pastor here? Pastor, would you please come forward? And would everyone please stand and join us afterwards for the pledge to our nation's flag?
Gracious God, we ask your protection and blessing as we gather here this afternoon to discuss and to plan for the well-being of the city of Beaumont. Give us the patience and the grace to be good listeners and to be respectful of the needs of all our brothers and sisters that we are privileged to serve. We ask that you bless our city and the larger community of our county, our state, and our country. Help us to realize that we are a microcosm of a larger world, a world that is constantly seeking peace and equity for its citizens. Maybe we always take the burden and responsibility of serving the community seriously. Keep our community of Beaumont safe and healthy as we reckon with the conditions of a pandemic that continues to linger and that poses a threat and an ongoing concern. Give us fortitude, discipline, and good judgment during difficult times. Give us strength and a positive attitude as we go about the daily challenges of living in a world beset with conflict and issues. May peace and goodwill reign in our hearts. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Uh, Councilmember Felschaw, would you lead us in our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, today, Councilmember, uh, the Mayor, uh, Muton, uh, is out for a previous appointment. Uh, she sends her, uh, best wishes and she will be back next week. Uh, at this time, um, may we have our roll call?
Mayor Muton, absent. Mayor Protem Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Neil Absinthe.
We do have a quorum. Uh, there are no presentations or recognitions to the, today. But at this time, any citizen who would like to speak to the council on an item on the agenda, uh, would you please make sure you fill out a green slip in the rear and bring it to our clerk who's up front? And she will call off the names of those who given, uh, signed the slips and presented it to her. And then you will have about three minutes to come to the podium to address the council. We ask that you respect the three minutes. And, uh, do you have any, anyone that's signed up to speak on items one through eight?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Yes, Mr. Manager?
Mayor Protem, uh, we'd like to defer item number three.
Item three.
As a part of the consent agenda. We'll hopefully bring it back next week.
Yes, sir. So, item three of the consent agenda has been, uh, delayed and pulled. Uh, with that, uh, is there any citizen that's, uh, signed up to speak or wanted to speak and hadn't had an opportunity to fill out the slip? With that, uh, uh, the floor will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda without item three.
There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda and second. All in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. Uh, now, at this time, we will move forward with, uh, our regular agenda. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Council, uh, item number six is to consider approving contracts for emergency standby products, services, and debris removal. Uh, specifications allow for the contract to be awarded to one or more vendors as determined by the city on a primary, secondary, and tertiary basis. The contract, uh, would be awarded for a three-year term with the possibility of two additional one-year extensions. DRC, Emergency Services, is recommended as the city's primary contractor. A secondary contract with Crowder Gulf LLC of Mobile, Alabama, is recommended and would be utilized in the event, uh, DRC could not provide the requested, uh, products and services. A contract with a third vendor, Ash Brit Incorporated of Deerfield Beach, Florida, is recommended as the tertiary contract in the event additional services are required. The budgetary impact of awarding these contract, contracts is contingent upon the occurrence of a declared disaster and the degree of resources needed at that time. The administration recommends approval.
You've heard, uh, the reading of item number six. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Uh, is there any discussion on this item?
What, uh, you say emergency standby products, what does that refer to?
Well, they're on standby to help us. They, after past hurricanes, uh, we've had companies on standby to help us, uh, pick up debris. Mostly pick up debris. They can provide different services, could be generators if they have them and we need them. So, our staff, mostly Bart Barcoiak, leads that logistics group during disasters and go through the list of services we need depending on what the event is. And this company, um, normally your primary, uh, contractor would start helping us provide those services.
This, uh, this contract repairs, is this something that will be reimbursed by FEMA afterwards?
In, in most cases, uh, that's why the fund balance and being in good financial position is so important because we normally pay for these services and then work with FEMA to be reimbursed after the fact, which in some cases takes years.
I have a question, man.
That's my turn.
Uh, I noticed, and looking at the numbers and reading it on the criteria evaluation sheet, I see the Galveston, to my analysis, that company had the best bid, but I noticed the experience and past performance, the Mobile, Alabama contract was actually higher. But the price, Galveston had a slight difference in the price, those two. One, one said twenty, the other says eighteen. Can you kind of explain with me what was the difference with those two?
Yeah, I'd ask Tim Arndt to check to come forward. He, uh, worked on this agenda item with staff, but I'll let him speak to that.
Mayor and council. I think, uh, there's five rating factors. I didn't bring a copy with me. There, it's best value and not just price. One of the things that we've had, and FEMA advocates, is everything doesn't have to be all about price. And in this case, we have, uh, multiple factors. We have past performance, uh, performance from maybe neighbors and things like that to look at. So, uh, their experience, their capabilities, their ability, you know, if, if they're impacted, um, like in a, a, a super widespread disaster, we need a company that's large enough, that's national enough to be able to bring in the resources we need even when our ne- neighbor like Houston is asking for the same resources. So they might have to get, uh, one meg or one and a half meg generator from Oregon or, you know, a, a tent, uh, shower trailer from Florida. You know, it's, so we need a, a large company. So there's more things than just price in here. Uh, there's a number of prices as well. There's tables that deal with equipment and there's tables that deal with debris. And, uh, there are several types of debris. And you'll see that if you go line by line, there's a lot of difference in that. But the different vendors, if you look at the bottom, the total, uh, package that they reported in their, uh, proposals, um, we, we use the table, uh, i- in that, the valuation of price, which was, I think, twenty percent of the, the grading factor was, uh, there was, uh, a grand total and then there was totals of tables one through four. And we used all those in, in relevance. Uh, we also tried to look at some of the past specific items that we've used a lot, such as trucks. Uh, we, we've rented trucks to, um, supplement the city, uh, solid waste vehicles. And, uh, some of the large generators, we used both some line items and the grand total and the table totals that they, they did as twenty percent of the valuation. And then there's these other factors that were on the sheet as well.
And based upon your experience with these storms, uh, has there ever been an instance where maybe a company that we contracted to having issues getting out here? Maybe because, you know, I see with Galveston, I know they get hit pretty hard too. Have we ever had an instance like that where we had an issue?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how do we normally go about it when we run into an instance like that?
We have multiple, a- as the manager mentioned, we have a, a tertiary main contractor and then we have some supplemental individual equipments. Like we got a, uh, a contractor, a letter of agreement on pricing for generators or fuel and a, and a bunch of other things. So we try to, we try to have a lot of redundancies to make sure we can work around it. And if you, if you look back at, um, at Rita, we had, and Ike, we had a lot of trouble getting the equipment we needed. We needed a bigger, more national company. And then if you look at something like Harvey that expanded such a wide range of, of the Texas Gulf Coast, I mean, everybody was asking for the same stuff. So it, it definitely is an issue and we got to have a lot of options, including partnerships. Uh, as, as you know, with ExxonMobil as an example, they actually lent us some generators to supplement what we couldn't get from our contractor.
All right, well, thank you, Tim. That's it for me, man.
Uh, any other questions or discussions? Call for the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Uh, motion passes. Uh, Mr. Manager, would you take us to item number seven?
Mayor Protem, council item seven is to consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract to C-Tex Facilities and Maintenance LLC, South Pine Street, caustic tank emergency replacement project. Project, uh, would replace a bulk caustic chemical storage tank. The work includes related structural and electrical improvements for operation of the tank. The water utility staff recommends awarding the project to C-Tex in the amount of one hundred and two thousand, three hundred and one dollars and sixty cents. A total of thirty calendar days allocated for the completion of the project. Funds are available in the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Call for, uh, there's a motion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution.
There's been a motion?
A second.
And a second. Are there any questions or discussions concerning item seven?
I have one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner?
Mr. Manager, uh, I notice, like, right now, we're getting a lot of rain. And we, we had rain for Lily a month and a week. And I see they have hourly pay on here on the next page. Is it a way we're going to monitor this hourly play, pay if we run into an instance where we run into weather or things to this magnitude? How are we going to kind of monitor, monitor that hourly, hourly play, pay?
Yeah, it's, it's a bid for the, the work to be done. So, uh, I don't know, we're not paying them time and materials. So, if they're monitoring their, their own hours on, on the actual work, uh, done. Now, we are looking at the contract time and if there's rain delays, then we'll have to come back and extend the time allowed to get the project done. But we're not paying time and materials where we have to watch how much time it's taking them to get it done.
I just want to clarify that.
Sure.
All right.
Answer your question. Any other questions or discussions? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? No nays? Motion passes. Uh, that concludes our, uh, regular agenda. We do have a discussion item. Uh, Mr. Manager, would you please go through the discussion item?
The discussion item is to review and discuss issuing certificates of obligation for street drainage projects and improvements. We have a PowerPoint that we're having some problems with.
Your, your mic's not on, go.
Thank you. Let me repeat that because if I don't use the mic, people cannot hear it when they watch the tape. Uh, the discussion item is to review and discuss issuing certificates of obligation for street and drainage projects and improvements. We have a PowerPoint or we did that we were having problems with. So I'm going to just pass out, uh, some copies and we'll walk through it together. We wanted the, the public to be able to see it on the screen, but... We can make these available to the public. So certificates of obligation, that's a form, it's a debt instrument. Similar to issuing bonds. Oftentimes, the city of Beaumont issues certificates of obligation for street drainage, general improvement projects. And that's paid for through property taxes, repaid. Oh, look at this, all right. Through, uh, through property taxes and, and then we also issue what we call water revenue bonds when the city moves forward with, uh, water and sewer projects. And that's repaid, uh, by the customers, you know, the payments they make on their water bill. So, we have three options for you, for your consideration today. And we talked about this, uh, in general terms within the last month with the council. So option one, and I'm going through this, I know you can read it, but there's people that, uh, maybe watching or listening that are not able to see this. So, street rehabilitation is something that, that we do on an ongoing basis to rehabilitate streets citywide. And we brought back to you the revised or updated analysis of our infrastructure of our street citywide. And it said that we needed to do approximately eight million dollars of work a year to continue to make progress. So, under option one, we would borrow sixteen million dollars for work over the next two-plus years. Sometimes you can, our, our plan would be to spend eight million a year and, and Mr. Barcoiak thinks we can. So, uh, the second item is a citywide ditching program, which would be something above and beyond what we do within our, uh, Streets and Drainage Division. This would be to, uh, utilize outside contractors to help us to hopefully spend two million dollars a year over the next two years, which would, um, roughly cover about forty percent of the ditches within our system. Again, we do, the city of Beaumont does not own any concrete ditches. That's all owned by Drainage District Six. What we, what we have are some, of course, underground, uh, stormwater systems, but we also have a lot of open ditches, as you're familiar with. So this is four million dollars to make improvements within what we own. And then stormwater-
Wait, wait, before we go and leave the ditching program question. Is this going to be in a, well, my understanding is right now the city will clean out ditches that are more than four feet in depth. Is this going to be for those ditches? Or is it going to be for ditches that are less than four feet, which we have traditionally said that citizens are responsible for?
We mean, okay, so the citizen is responsible for mowing ditches less than four feet in depth. However, the city does grading work and slopes ditches and maintains ditches no matter the depth. So, again, the citizen mows it, but we can, we'll make sure that it's, you know, water's moving or that's our goal. You want to make sure that all ditches are graded properly and that's the city's responsibility. But the property owners are responsible for mowing it.
Okay, so, just so that I have a complete understanding of what we would be potentially talking about here. We're looking at a program where this contractor would come in and potentially reshape or grade ditches. Is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and if the homeowner, for some reason, didn't like that, they wouldn't have any say about that. That would be the city's call. If we feel like the city needs to grade or change the slope of a ditch, that would be something that we would do because it's a public necessity, is that right?
That's correct. I'll read what's in the proposed capital program. The city of Beaumont owns, operates, and maintains three hundred and sixteen miles of drainage ditches. The ditching program would be an annual project to clean and reshape drainage ditches and to clean out culverts. The estimated cost for the project is two million dollars per year and will allow for yearly maintenance on approximately twenty percent of drainage ditches owned by the city.
Thank you.
Does it also mean, uh, if there, uh, there's a need for replacement of culverts, uh, that would be included in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Actually, we wouldn't do it as part of this. We would address any culvert replacement internally through Streets and Drainage.
Okay.
The contract would just solely be the, uh,
Ditch.
The ditching work, yes, sir.
The work would be done if needed.
Yes, if we identify that there are problems with the culverts, then we'll address those separately.
Okay.
But that would include, like, if you have to blow out those culverts or whatever you need to do to unstop them?
Yes, sir, we've been looking at that. Um, we were evaluating, I think, uh, Bridge City had recently put a contract out and did ditching and, and the culvert maintenance. We're actually contemplating, uh, just solely focusing on the ditching with the contractor and making use of internal resources to go and jet those culverts just because of the pricing, the, that we saw on that. So probably what we'll do is we'll, we'll put it out for bid for the ditching work with an alternate of jetting those culverts out. And, and if the pricing is high on the culverts, then we'll do that internally and get the, the bang for our buck on getting that ditching work done. And then we'll come through with city forces and, and do the culvert ditching. I think Bridge City's price is like three hundred and fourteen dollars a culvert or something really high.
So you, they have to, um, if you're grading the ditches, then the culvert's going to have to be cleaned too or else it, it's, it's part of it as far as the flow of the water.
It is part of it. The culverts need to, need to be cleaned for things to, to flow properly, yes, sir.
What, what is jetting the culverts?
We have, uh, we have vac trucks, uh, or jet vac trucks at, uh, at Streets and Drainage. So what they'll do is they'll, they'll put a force, like a high-powered water hose in essence off that truck and, and blow any debris in that culvert, you know, out. Uh, we also have an attachment on there that if, uh, a cutting attachment where we can go and cut through roots, uh, if they're present within piping systems. And then it also has a vacuum capability to suck up, you know, any loosened debris that, that got put out, um, by the jetting.
Okay, Mr. Man-
Mr. Manager? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you was done.
No, I'm done.
Okay. Mr. Manager, I have a question. While we're on the topic of ditches, uh, I want to know if this is something that the city has ever considered? And since we're talking about it, I'd like for us to put some consideration in it. Uh, our population of sixty-five and older is fourteen percent. Have we ever thought of maybe a program to where the city could manage the ditches for our seniors that are over the age of sixty-five? Maybe we, maybe sign up online or something to that magnitude?
For, for us to maintain their ditches?
Yeah, for, for seniors that are over the age of sixty-five.
Something the council could consider. It's, uh, once you start that, you, you'll never end it and you're going to hire a lot more people to do that work.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to address that. You know, um, there's a lot of seniors that are over sixty-five that are probably in a better financial position than people that are in their twenties and thirties that are financially able, uh, you know, are physically able to do their own ditches. And so, uh, you, you know, we have to balance all of that out because, yes, people that are over sixty-five, um, you know, may not be physically able to do it, but they might be in a financial position. And so, so there's, there's pros and cons. And what the city manager just said, if, if we started off with that, we're going to have to really look at some changes in our budget, um, to do something like that.
Yeah, I understand. I totally get it. I looked at it from a physical standpoint and not the financial aspect. So I totally understand what you're saying.
So, um, were you finished with your presentation on option one or?
Yes, sir, let me, let me, couple other points. Okay, so stormwater point repairs. I'll just read what that means in the proposed capital program. City of Beaumont owns, operates, and maintains four hundred and twenty-one miles of stormwater lines. The stormwater pipe inspection and point repair program uh, would be an annual project to inspect, clean, and perform point repairs on large trunk line storm sewers maintained by the city of Beaumont to promote drainage. The estimated cost for the project is one million dollars per year. And that's the, the reason to borrow two million over the next two-plus years. I mean, we do this, but not to the degree we think we should. And this has taken it to a different level, especially after the storms that we've dealt with, uh, trying to be proactive. And then number four, thread needles stormwater line. I'm not going to, I'm going to be, uh, brief on this because we are in the middle of a lawsuit as relates to this subject. However, we need to plan for it. This is a large stormwater line that brings a lot of water from the South Park area as it, that water moves east towards the Natures River. There is a stormwater line that goes through ExxonMobil's property that we're planning to make repairs to. And so that's just an estimate because we presented them a plan that they have not signed off on yet. But we do, again, think we need to plan for it. We do think it's needed. We do think it's going to happen if the council approves it. So we're just trying to be proactive and that's why that four million dollars is in there.
So, Mr. Manager, so we're dealing with one of the most critical aspects of infrastructure, street and drainage. And so, am I understanding that, uh, three of the proposed items on here deal with drainage primarily? And it deals with, uh, reducing flooding and having better system, getting the water out of people's yards into the system and onto the DD six d- ditches, is that?
Either into DD, DD sixes facilities or into the Natures River.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Getz?
With, uh, regard to the fourth item here, would that be a subject that we could discuss further in executive session? If there's litigation involved in this particular project?
Yes.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to ask that that be done. And with regard to borrowing all this money, since our fund balance is as healthy as it is, have we weighed the pros and cons of, uh, paying cash for some of this stuff versus borrowing? And, um, you know, if so, what are, what are the pros and cons for paying as we go versus borrowing? And I'm not suggesting that we should pay as we go for all of this. That's not what I'm suggesting. But for some of these infrastructure repairs, uh, we do have a very strong fund balance. What are the pros and cons?
We, we have considered it and do not recommend it at this time.
Okay, is there a reason?
How much are you? Are you speaking to a certain dollar amount or?
Well, I, you, you know, our fund balance is what now, fifty-three, fifty-four million dollars? And, and according to the, uh, requirements that we try to operate under, we want to have, uh, what percentage of our budget is our fund balance?
At least twenty percent is- At least twenty percent is part of your adopted policies in the budget.
Okay, so, you know, it, it looks like we have, you know, fifteen million dollars at least that we could put at some of this stuff. Um, I'm just, we're, we're here to discuss today, and I'm just trying to get an idea as to whether or not we want to borrow. Do we have any kind of idea what kind of interest rate we would be able to obtain presently if we borrowed this money?
It's a best guess, but it's gonna be somewhere probably between two-point-two-five and three percent, is what, what I'd say.
Well, that's a pretty low interest rate. I'm, I mean, maybe nobody else has these concerns. Uh, I, I think it's something we ought to look at and, y- you know, try to figure out if there's, um, you, you know, which is the best way to go. That's what we're tasked with doing. And are there other things that we need to do infrastructure-wise, uh, to, uh, include in these projects besides the street and, uh, the, the things you have listed here?
Okay. Well, Mr. Manager, I, I do understand Councilmember Getz, uh, concerns. However, um, one of the things I think I, we've seen over, over recent years is we've not even been able to maintain a balance and management of our infrastructure, uh, as far as, uh, getting prepared and moving forward all over the city and addressing these. So it's very important, we've seen through experience, it's important that we maintain a safe, uh, fund balance for emergencies and contingencies. However, we know that we've not been putting enough into street infrastructure repair as well as drainage infrastructure. So I, I understand his question, but I'm, uh, I'm of the opinion, well, we, we all have our opinions about how we should deal with preparations in the future. So I, I believe we, we, we're in a very safe fund balance position, and we wanna remain there. But we do know we have to do more than we've been doing with, uh, catching up with our infrastructure repairs.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't. I'm just suggesting that we ought to think about how we're gonna pay for it because of the fact that we do have a very healthy fund balance. I don't know that we need to have fifty-three, fifty-four million dollars sitting out there. You know, forty million dollars is way more than the twenty percent our policy requires. So I, I'm just saying that, do we want to borrow all of this, or do we want to pay for some of it with available cash that we have on hand?
I understand, Councilmember. And I think that's one of the things that we're all gonna have to make decisions within ourselves, what we believe is in the best interest of the citizens of Beaumont. And, uh, but this is only option one, is that correct?
Yes.
We, you have some other options that you're gonna present. Uh, Councilmember Turner, did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay.
I was looking forward to seeing the other options.
Um, Mr. Manager, uh,
I can make a quick, I can make a quick point on the fund balance. So we do have a very healthy fund balance in the general fund, but one thing that gets overlooked is that we have other funds. We have the Hurricane Harvey Fund, we have the Hurricane Laura Fund, we have the COVID Fund, we have the Winter Freeze. All of those funds are in the negative because we spend the money and then we try to get reimbursed later. If we don't get reimbursed by FEMA, those funds come from the general fund fund balance. So we don't know where we're going to stand or shake out on all of those emergency funds yet, and they're all in the negative right now until we get FEMA reimbursement. So that's something to consider.
Okay.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Option two is, uh, twenty million for street rehabilitation instead of the sixteen million with the other three items remaining the same. So you could possibly borrow thirty million dollars. And then option three is back to the sixteen million for street rehabilitation. Four million for the citywide ditching. Two million for the point repairs inspections. The new item is, Fourth Street is in very rough condition, as all of you are aware. Fourth Street runs from the end of Old Town and goes south all the way to Cardinal Drive. Highway sixty-nine. It's an estimated seven million dollar project. And that's the one that the administration actually recommends is option three. We would recommend that you borrow thirty-three million for these five projects.
Councilmember Junior?
Fourth Street, part of it is, is, uh, big part of it is concrete. They're gonna a- put asphalt over the concrete?
Yes, that's what we-
They do that?
That's what we've been doing on, uh, Delaware, Dowling, Magnolia. It's, uh, much less expensive. You don't get the useful life as going back and totally tearing it out and going back with a concrete new street. And that's why I say Washington Boulevard is a thirty-three million dollar project alone. So we would recommend the overlay just because the concrete reconstruction is so expensive.
We, we would, as part of that, repair any of the concrete panels that were necessary prior to the overlay, and then we would overlay it, and Fourth Street would be a consistent asphalt road the entire length at that point.
Oh, so not just where it needed, the whole street?
No, it'd be, the entire roadway, we'd, we'd go back and shore it up, the base, is what he's saying, and then overlay on top.
Right.
Like Magnolia.
When we, when we say Fourth Street, can you be a little bit more specific on, from where to where?
The entire stretch from Highway sixty-nine or Cardinal Drive all the way to Ashley where it ends in Old Town. It's a long roadway.
Including the under, they got the underpass right there at Hollywood also.
Yes.
You're right.
Councilmember Getz?
I like option three also. How would it affect our citizens in terms of paying back these certificates of obligation with their tax bills?
So you might recall from, um, last time I got up and talked about the property tax rate with the increase of assessed values, um, just for the general fund, well, I'm sorry, just for the debt service fund alone, which, which is where we paid all the principal and interest. If the property values remain the same as they are today and we keep the interest and sinking tax rate the same, which is twenty cents out of the seventy-one cents, we should realize an extra two-point-two million dollars in revenue. And for a thirty-three million dollar bond, you can amortize it over twenty years, twenty-five years, or thirty years. For a twenty-year amortization, which would be my preference, you pay a lot less interest on that. The annual payments are at two-point-one million dollars. So there would be basically no change in the interest and sinking tax rate to borrow thirty-three million dollars.
So would the overall tax rate change, or?
Yeah, I still believe the overall tax rate, just like I talked about last week, will probably end up between sixty-eight to sixty-nine cents. So it'll be basically a two-cent reduction of what we have today.
So, I hate to put you on the spot, but, uh, I have a question that's germane to this. Um, if we were to borrow forty-three million dollars and not thirty-three, how would that affect our interest and sinking?
So normally for every ten million dollars you borrow, it costs about one cent of property tax rate 'cause one cent brings in about eight, eight-hundred thousand dollars of revenue. And so it would proba-, if you wanna borrow an extra ten on top of this thirty-three, you'd probably have to raise your interest and sinking rate from twenty cents to twenty-one cents.
So if we were to do that, we would still be looking at potentially reducing our tax rate overall from seventy-one cents where it is now to something less?
It's possible. Like I said, the numbers are preliminary. There are sales tax adjustments that go into your calculation of property tax rate. I know that doesn't seem, um, intuitive, but many years ago, council elected to increase the, uh, sales tax in the city by an extra half cent. So that goes into the calculation of your, your M and O rate. So there's a lot of complexities in, uh, calculating the rate, but I still think, yeah, you could probably do forty-three million and maybe come out with the same tax rate, maybe a little less.
So where I'm going with this is for years and years and years, we have talked about the Dowling extension. And we had a workshop over at the Lakeside Center in which, at that time, four councilmembers indicated a desire to go forward with the Dowling extension, at least pha-, one phase of it. It would be done in phases. It, it's about a thirty-three million dollar project, and it would be done in phases, a third, a third, a third. The city manager has told me before that there's not any capital plan, any capital project that we could do that would provide more economic impact than extending Dowling Road. I don't know what kind of data or information he used to make that statement to me, but I can certainly see how, from the projections I've seen from the developers, that that could bring in an enormous amount of tax revenue that is currently sitting there on land that is zoned agricultural. The, um, idea of having a road all the way from Interstate Ten to connect up with where Dowling hits on, uh, dead ends at College right now is very lucrative. There's a lot of things that could be done there at I-ten and Dowling, if that was a, an address. I, I can foresee, for instance, uh, another Walmart coming in, or possibly a Costco. Those are the types of, uh, big retailers that would envy an address out there at I-ten and Dowling. It would also bring these stores available to a portion of the City of Beaumont closer to where people live. In the south end, if people wanna go to Walmart, they gotta traipse clear across town. This would be something a lot closer to people that live in Pear Orchard, a lot closer to people that live in South Park. I also think that, um, we have had this on the books for so long that if we're never gonna do it, we need to just take it off the books and forget about it. And every time I bring this up, I ca-, I get hit with, well, that's a great project, but it's not the right time. I can't think of a better time than right now to do this when we could borrow the money and get started on it without increasing our tax rate. Every time that I've brought it up before, it was said that, well, you know, if you wanna do this, you're gonna have to look at increasing the tax rate. But now, because of property appraisals, we would not have to increase the tax rate. In fact, we're still looking at the tax rate going down. So to me, as an individual, it, it doesn't matter to me. I have no interest in any property out there. Uh, I, I know some of the developers out there, but, you know, as a, as an elected official, trying to do what is best for this city and the community, I have to bring that up because it's, it's a great project. So I would encourage us to, yes, adopt option three, but also consider to go beyond that to consider borrowing an additional ten million to get the first phase of the Dowling project underway.
Okay, so we've had discussions about the options that's been presented today. Mr. Manager, uh, what is, what should we expect as far as a decision being made as to when it will come back to council for consideration?
Well, if there's consensus today, and I've talked to Councilmember Neil about this subject, so I know where he stands, and I'll visit with the mayor, um, when she's back. So we'll start the paperwork if there's consensus to move forward. And, uh, I met with our financial advisor yesterday, uh, with the Royal Bank of Canada, RBC, and, um, normally takes probably fifty to sixty days. So we'll, if it's okay with you, we'll start the paperwork and plan to borrow the thirty-three million. And, uh, they may have to come back and vote on some parameter resolution. So you, you would vote on it in the near future. If it's okay with you. We do need to start moving because this is all driven, the street rehabilitation's driven by your cash flow. Once, once cash gets down to a certain level where we need to borrow again to keep it, keep the program moving, that's the purpose or the reason for the timing. And then some of these items are new, trying to do more, as the mayor pro tem stated, trying to do more as it relates to drainage, be more proactive, do more work. And we're in a financial position to do that, which I think is great. So, but to answer your question, if, if y'all give us the green light, you're not voting today, you're just saying, we know the administration can move forward and start this process. We'll bring it back to you for that vote. Again, on that parameter resolution, what that does is allow the City of Beaumont to borrow when the timing in the market is really good, according to our financial advisor. So it just gives us some flexibility to borrow within a certain time period. And, uh, the plan, though, would be to move forward and borrow thirty-three million dollars.
Okay. So, Mr. Manager, it sounds like, um, there's, there's a consensus on, uh, the bar, on the prospect of borrowing the thirty-three million. However, um, there's a question. Councilmember Getz feels that there's another project that could fit in here. And that would be something that would be, uh, to be, uh, made by, that's a decision that would be made by the entirety of the council.
Well, I think he wants to have an executive session on the, uh, thread needle stormwater line. You'd have to have a second to have that executive session. And then the question, do we wait until after that executive session, which holds this up a couple weeks? Or do we move forward in the process? That's up to the council. And then second, I'd ask him, when he says the first phase of the Dowling extension, what phase is he talking about?
Well, Mr. Manager, let's deal with one question at a time. So the question before council. You've heard Councilmember Getz, and he's, he wants to add the additional project in consideration of the borrowing rather than thirty-three, an additional ten million for forty-three. Is that something, uh, other members of council want to discuss or feel strongly about? Since there is a consensus about the, the option three?
I have a question. With all due respect, I do think it's a good idea to borrow more if we can without raising the taxes. But me personally, I don't think it's a good idea to borrow it and use it for that particular project, being honest. I see a lot of projects that have been on there that the streets are already kinda in rough straight, shape. So I was looking at it from the aspect that if that money is available to do that, I think it's a great idea. But me personally, I'd rather look at some other options or some of the other streets before that extension.
So rather than convoluting this process, I mean, I know that there are other projects in Ward Three that would merit deal, being dealt with because it deals with infrastructure rehabilitation as opposed to just, uh, new streets in, in dealing with that. So this is about, uh, dealing with the rehabilitation of our infrastructure. That's the way it's been presented. And I understand your concern, Mike, I mean, councilman, and, um, I, I respect that. Uh, but at this point, I, I'm in favor of moving forward with option three, and it sounds like other councilmembers, un- unless I've not heard that correctly. Okay, so.
No, I, and I agree with, uh, option three. Uh, I agree with that, too. The only thing I would ask is that if we're not gonna ever consider any, any way of, of borrowing, that we just take, uh, the Dowling extension off the capital plan because, you know, carrying it forward year after year after year after year without having the administration make any recommendation whatsoever of how that should be funded, uh, you know, that's just, y- you know, it just needs to be off.
Just so the public understands, we, we do make recommendations every time you borrow money. So there are a number of projects on this list. In fact, the great majority are not funded, right? So I've had some, you know, I work for seven people. I've had a majority of the council. say, let's even streamline this more. And if we really don't think a project's going to move within the next three to five years, let's take it off, including the Dallin extension. So, you know, that's, again, up to the city council.
Well, Mr. Manager, I understand, I understand that concern, and councilman, I understand that. But at this point, we're dealing with infrastructure rehabilitation. And if we, if you want to move to take it off or leave it in, we can deal with that. But let's just make a decision as to how we're going to move forward with what's been proposed today.
It's fine.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Manager, is that a question?
I have one question. How do you decide where this money is spent as far as physically in the city? Do you have a list of streets? Do you have a list of ditches? I see, I mean, are those top two, I see with the stormwater points where you know where those are and you know Threadneedle and you know Fourth Street, but on the first two, how do we decide where exactly all this, do you have a list of where it's going to be spent?
Yeah, we have a proposed list. Our engineers and Mr. Barkowiac in the Public Works Department, he's the director, they have a list of what they think are the priorities within each ward across the entire city. And that money is divided up. We try to do it as equally as possible. And then you're given that list, the public's given the list, what the estimated budget is, what the streets are lined out, within their, you know, stipulated the parameters of each street. And it's just an ongoing rehabilitation program.
It goes by priority as to how bad a shape the streets are in?
Well, that, that's the main consideration. You look at what's the rating? What's the traffic volume? How many homes and businesses does that particular street serve? So there's a lot that goes into their recommendations. I don't know if you want to expand upon that.
You, you hit it exactly where I was going to say. We look at the pavement condition index that, that the study gave us, including our own assessment by staff going out there in the traffic count, how much traffic's on that road, and then how many citizens would benefit of our businesses that are on the road? Because so, some of the roads are in poor shape, but there's, there's just nothing, you know, present on that road anymore at the present time. So we try to, try to get the most bang for the buck on the roads we, we are fixing. But we'll come up with the list, the recommended list, give it to the city manager, and then he'll run it by council. And once we're approved on that list, we'll publish it on the website so that the public knows what roads are being addressed.
When do you think we might get that list?
As soon as we know how much money we're looking at doing per year, then we can come up with a list off that.
So then what, one additional question. What is the most recent list that we have?
Uh, street rehab phase three is, is what we're wrapping up now. So that, that was the, the last batch of streets that, that we had published out there.
Okay, I'll see the material.
So when the council, when you get that list to the council, is council able to change priorities on some of those streets that you recommend? Like maybe move some up?
It's always in y'all's control as to what gets done, yes, sir.
And the same thing with the city ride ditching, are we going to do the whole three hundred and fifty miles? Or, or just by priority?
You will over a five-year period. That's the plan, and so.
So this will cover just a little under half?
Twenty percent, twenty percent per year.
If you borrow the four.
Per year, yeah.
Correct, twenty percent per year. We've, we've been working on mapping all of the ditches within the city. So we've got the ditches mapped, we're going through, and we're trying to map all of the culverts currently in the GIS system. So what we'll do is we'll take the amount of ditches that we have per ward, and then we're going to do twenty percent of each ward's ditches in each given year so that at the end of the five years, we've completed the city.
Some, some wards have more ditches than others, though.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Councilmember Gatz?
With regard to the ditching program, I understand the need to clean out and widen and deepen some of the city ditches. However, if that water flows to where the DD six ditch picks it up and that DD six ditch is not moving water, we're going to, we're going to come into a place where we're going to start backing up. And this has to be done in conjunction with DD six, making sure that we have a way to have the water to continue to flow ultimately to Hildebrandt Bayou or the Nature's River. Otherwise, we're just kind of spinning our wheels. You know, you, your water will flow only as far as, as it will be allowed to flow.
We're addressing the maintenance and, and of our drainage system throughout the city. So we're trying to get that optimized to where it works efficiently. DD six is doing the same thing with their ditches throughout their system in terms of mopping them out, addressing maintenance, et cetera. And it is a partnership between the two because of course, when their ditch is, is full to capacity, we're not going to be moving water to the extent we would if it was empty, yes.
Bart, do you, I know we work in conjunction with DD six, but do you actually meet with the people over there and tell them what we have going on? And see what they have going on so we could work together to get this working right?
We do, we meet periodically, and we're in conversation by email and phone each week.
So call for clarification. I know about a month and a half ago, we approved thirteen point three million. So there's four million, two million, and additional four million will be additional on top of the sewer and drainage.
Well, thirteen million was for sewer, so that's, that's over here. This is for drainage.
Yeah, so sewer and drainage is different. And my next question is, over the past three to four years, on average, how much have we spent on our streets? I noticed you said multiple times it needs to be roughly eight million dollars a year. That's what's been referred? So what have we been doing over the last few years on average?
Five or six on average?
I, I think around, around six. We did have a number of, of other projects that came in. We had some FHWA money, and we had some CDBG money that, that we put in the roads, so I'd have to go and add all of that together.
So that was above and beyond, so.
Correct.
The first study was telling us if you spend, try to spend five million a year, you'd make progress. And then when they came and did this reassessment, that's when they said you need to go to eight million on average a year to continue to make progress. So I'd say we were more in the five million dollar neighborhood. And then, of course, Harvey hit, and then we ended up getting some federal money for streets. So it was above and beyond the five million, and those were overlays.
We do have everything that's been done over the past probably four or five years posted on the Public Works site. Both the list, I believe the money's on there, and as well as a map that shows where those streets physically are in terms of the limit. So all that information is published as far as what's been done.
And last question, when you say evenly for the public, can you explain a little better about, have y'all always done funding in the past?
We've been asked to try to balance it across the ward, so over time, we try to spend about twenty-five percent per ward on these. Now, that's overall. When you do something like we did Helbig fairly recently, that's in one ward. So on any given project, it may be skewed one way or another. But overall, if you look across the years, it's about twenty-five percent per ward right now.
Okay, Mr. Manager, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Question for City Manager Bart. And I understand that, you know, historically, we've tried to be fair and equitable with the four wards. And, and I, you know, that sounds, of course, that sounds fair. But I think we understand that we can't, there can't be equality until we, until we start equal. And we know there are certain parts of our city that are older than other parts and more disrepair just because of age. So should there be some consideration given to a disproportionate amount of money spent in certain areas over other areas just because it's an older part of town and it needs more attention? Because if we, if we break it up by twenty-five percent equally, those older parts of town, will they ever catch up? And so it's a question. And I know this is, this can get complicated, I understand, and we try to be fair with everyone. But yet, it's just a question, should we start looking at spending a disproportionate amount of money in some of the older parts of town?
It's a philosophical question that the councils dealt with for many years. Every council's different. The last council that considered what you're talking about, there's arguments on both sides, right? There's no doubt the infrastructure is older and in greater disrepair in the north end and the south end. Then you talk about, let's say, Ward Two, which is a city annexed properties, I believe, in the sixties out in Amelia. And they have a lot of bad streets as well. Old Town has a lot of bad streets. So every ward has them, is what the council, the conclusion that they came, came to, that every ward has issues. And they wanted to spend it, as Bart said, pretty much twenty-five percent or equally across the four wards. That's up to the council. If you wanted to do it differently, all you have to do is tell us and we'll, we'll do it.
Well, councilmember, that has been a concern that has been raised by me for years. However, we continue to distribute the funds equally. But a perfect example would be the Fourth Street. There are times that certain projects just reach a point that it has to be addressed. But that's over and above the percentage that's been allocated for the ongoing rehabilitation program. So that has been done, and it is very difficult to put a dollar amount or a percentage to what's equitable. But that's one of those things that you know when you see. Mr. Manager, any, you have your understanding of where we're going?
Yes, sir, I think there's a green, agreement, we'll move forward with the paperwork to start the borrowing process. And at the same time, if there's a second council member that wants to have an executive session on the Threadneedle Stormwater Line, then we'll schedule that.
Okay, okay, with that, we will move forward. We have no executive session. So at this time, this is a time for any citizen who wants to speak on any item. This is a time, hopefully you filled out the form that's in the back and you brought it to our clerk. And the clerk will now make, call the names of those who's filled out the form. We ask that you please honor the three minutes, and Madam Clerk, it's on you.
I'm Sherri Jefferson, forty-seven eighty-five Lufkin Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Please come forward, Ms. Jefferson. No, ma'am, this is free agenda. This is open mic for you. Please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And would you please state your name?
My name is Sherri Jefferson. I live at forty-seven eighty-five Lufkin Street, which is in Ward Three.
Yes, ma'am.
To the, I was so, I was expecting the mayor, but Mayor Pro Tem.
That's okay.
Samuel. I'm not here to complain today. On last week, my husband came in with boxing gloves on. I'm here to say thank you to the mayor in her absence, Councilwoman Turner, Mr. Mike Harris, if he's here. But anyway, I, I thank them on behalf of my husband and myself for coming together and helping us solve the dilemma that we had with our sewage out there in the north end. Councilwoman Samuel, you already have talked with me so many times on, I've complained to you so many times on the telephone. And in your absence last week, these people came together to help us try to solve the dilemma. And I just wanted to come back, rather than sending out little thank you cards, I wanted to make a public thank you to let you all know that we really appreciate it. Mr. Gatz, my husband told you thank you last week. And so that's all that I came for, just to tell you thank you and may God bless you all for caring.
Thank you.
I'm Louis Vaughn, ninety-six fifteen Mapes, Beaumont, Texas.
Council, City Manager. What is quality of life? Quality of life is the standard of health, comfort, happiness experienced by individuals or group. The things that are needed for equality of life. It is also the degree to which an individual is healthy, comfortable, and able to participate or enjoy events, life events. The quality of life is more than life itself. And that brings me to the landfills in Beaumont, Texas, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. These landfills are equivalent to unrefined gold. In my study with the LMOP, Landfill Methane Outreach Program, they help cities with projects to turn landfills into cash. I had brought that up before, that some, in December the eleventh of twenty-eleven, we had an opportunity to participate in a project that as of this day, had we participated, we would have had forty million dollars. Let me say that again, forty million dollars. We were going to get a stifle of four hundred thousand dollars a year, or we would get the fuel that would have been turned over from, or regenerated from the landfill. We got gold in the landfill. I, I prescribe to waste management, and they're always talking about the way that we can recoup. Last at the town meeting, a lot of the young people was talking about Austin. If you look at Austin, Austin's making money. Why? Because they are doing a quality of life. We're not doing that here for whatever reason. Next time I come, I will talk about the fact of recycling and how much money can be made from that. I seen where in Vermont, they are making tons of money on garbage. Why can't we do it here? That's not difficult, especially if it don't cost you anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Brian Nipfo, sixty-nine fifty-five Shanahan, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Just want to make my comments on Delaware Extension. We've all agreed in here that we do need more jobs, you know, expand the city quality of life. Nobody disagrees about these things. For an extra ten million to start the first phase of the Delaware Extension, which would be paid for itself, would create jobs. If it's a twenty, twenty-year loan, I believe that the tax base would outweigh that, and we'd have a net positive return on investment. You'd have more Costco's and restaurants and things that would be filled up with new workers, new, maybe housing, I don't know what's in the actual plan. I think I've saw a few different versions of it, but I mean, I mean, we've had Delaware Extension. We've extended Dallin away from around the mall to where HEB is, all of that growth. I would love to know what those figures are, if it's about the same amount of land that's been developed and the same amount of, you know, mileage or what have you. Look at the numbers and see what's from part of the mall all the way around to where HEB is, the newer part. And compare it to what might be proposed on Part One, Mr. Gatz talked about, and see what the taxes are versus what you're going to be paying out, and do the math. And let's go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Nipfo.
The Pharaoh Richard, fifty-two seventy-five Parkview Drive, sorry, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just have a quick request. Can we please buy back Concord Homes so that we can have a place for the displaced homeless people? It's really, really sad. In just the last two weeks, I have witnessed some things that are unbelievable that are happening, especially to the homeless women who have no defense, physical, mental defense against some of the travesties that. who have no defense, physical, mental defense against some of the travesties that happen to them just to sustain life and to eat the things that they must do to survive. I'm noticing also that from the, about seventy-five percent of the homeless people that I'm encountering on a daily basis are suffering from some type of mental illness. I have a master's degree in psychology. I've worked with suicidal homicidal children in Los Angeles, California, in a level fourteen, which is the highest placement, as well as level twelve. I've worked with mentally ill patients for a very long time. And my belief is that the majority of them are schizophrenic. And the majority of them don't really know where they are or how to negotiate day-to-day life-sustaining skills. There's so many vacant buildings downtown. I'm so willing, I'm so willing and I'm so able to do so much to help. This is my area. And I appreciate you, Councilman Getz, for coming to me. I just apologize. I have, I'm forty-nine, haven't had a ticket since I was sixteen, haven't been in an accident other than one in twenty-eighteen. And literally in the last two weeks, I've been in two total loss accidents. One by the loves where that construction site is. For some reason, the rain, I couldn't see, a hydroplane had a total loss. And then three days later, same, it was weird. And so, that's why there's been a delay in me coming to you. But while I'm not physically able, people are suffering. It's really, 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 really sad to see people sleep on the sidewalk, people eat out of garbage cans, people wash with a napkin and some water or spit or whatever fluid they can use to just wipe their bodies. And the expressions on their faces when I go and I present them with tents, sleeping bags, or chairs. It's an astronomical feeling that I can't compare to anything in the spirit world that I've ever felt, just to see a smile on someone's face. If you ever just have a chance, I would encourage each and every one of you, if you could, adopt one homeless person. I check on a lady, her name is Claudia. She's usually on Calderon Seventh. She usually sleeps by Saint Elizabeth because she feels safe there. I check on her every single day, three in the afternoon and three o'clock in the morning. I'm checking on her. I just drive by just to see if she's asleep. I bought her cots. I bought her so many things. And for some reason, when she leaves to go do whatever she needs to do to get whatever she needs to get, someone steals her stuff. So, thank you so much. And just, I'm just asking, please adopt one homeless person. We can all make a difference.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Richard.
Nicholas Hunger, ninety-one fifty-five Mapes, Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor Pro Tim, Council, City Manager, you're different today. I want to thank you all for having the courage to push forward with these ideas about growing Beaumont. I've been hit with so many obstacles of reasons on why my business wouldn't succeed, that it just didn't happen that way in Beaumont. We don't do things that way in Beaumont. But the more and more I progress and the more and more I try to, to grow my company and my knowledge base, the more information I come to find out that there's so many resources that are readily available to you. One of the things that I've been able to do with my extra time that I actually have, it's like forty-five minutes, is I've been actually going around to people who can't mow their own lawn. And just putting my mower in the bed of my truck, riding around, find somebody who looks like they need their grass cut. Because for me, at a, there was a point in my life where I couldn't get my grass cut every day or every time I needed it. So, with what you were suggesting, Albert, I think that's something we can definitely work with, with the foundation that we're starting with the Beaumont I Can Incorporated, you know what I'm talking about. So, I just want to say thank you guys for, for being forthright and transparent about everything and progressing to make the city better for, for all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Hunger.
Oh, I do want to say, I cannot read the packet on the, online. It's like really bad resolution. Whenever they scan it in, can I just do it a little bit higher so I can actually read it?
That is all I have, Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay. With that, we have no executive session. And we thank you for coming out today. And we adjourn this. Oh, my bad. I hadn't done this in a while. Okay.
We'll make it easy. No comments, Mayor Pro Tim.
Councilman Turner?
Yes, I'd like to take the time out to recognize NFL player from Beaumont, Texas, PJ Locke. On this past Sunday, he put on a football camp. And he, he sponsored this camp for two hundred kids. Two hundred kids from this area went to this camp completely free. And they had a great time. They had the opportunity to meet other players in the NFL. People like that, I think they should be recognized. And I'm going to push to keep getting him recognized in the community. Hopefully, he can move forward with some type of a proclamation form. This upcoming Sunday, we have a Know Your Worth brunch. It'll be at Nicklum's Academy. And we still have eight more slots left for kids. We're targeting teenagers. Teenagers, that's what we're targeting. We want to help them kind of find their worth, their value, want them to kind of see what's next in their life. So, anybody who knows a teen that may be interested, it's a Know Your Worth brunch. And it'll be this upcoming Sunday at Nicklum's Academy. You can inbox me or email me if you're interested. Next, I would like to say to Taylor Neal in his absence, his daughter's undergoing a surgery. I want to let him know the council has him in our prayers. And we have him in our prayers. Ask the community to put him in your prayers, along so with Ms. Robin Muton in her absence. We ask you to put her in your prayers as well. And lastly, BoLimpics, I want to shout out the city of Beaumont. Y'all went through a lot of obstacles. Y'all made it happen. Y'all had it planned for one weekend, but we have experienced literally a month and a week of rain. And they still made it happen this upcoming, this past Saturday. The turnout was great. Everyone had a good time. And the atmosphere was amazing. And I want to thank the United Way. They put me in a dunking boot. And we raised a tremendous amount of money this past Saturday. So, I just want to say thank you to the city for coming together and doing something positive. And thank you for letting us know that you didn't have an issue. I appreciate that as well, okay?
Councilman Getz?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Question, did we cancel the executive session previously scheduled for today?
Yes, it was canceled. Is that correct?
Okay, great. Second, BoLimpics, echo what you say. You're lucky that you weren't in the dunking booth when I was throwing the ball because I nailed it two out of three times. Brad Brown got wet. So, you know, I've still got the arm. That's, that's great. Third, one of the things that we like to do is have neighborhood associations in Ward Two. And Dallin West meets tonight at the Rogers Park Community Center. We have a social hour beginning at six-thirty. The meeting starts at seven. All are invited, even if you're not in Dallin West, you're invited to attend the Neighborhood Association. Fourth, I want to thank the council for having a town hall last Tuesday to discuss the pros and cons of purchasing and demolishing the AT&T building. It gave citizens the chance to come out. I also, though, want to remind council that some people were not privileged enough to be able to attend that, and they have sent emails. I actually encountered a citizen said, well, emails don't count, that only people that were there voicing their opinions should have those opinions accounted. Well, I disagree with that. Emails that are mailed to the council that have people's viewpoints as to whether or not that's a good project or not, where every bit is valid, is if you were able to attend and speak. And I think it is important to note that of the emails this council has received so far, and now it's up to about eighty-five percent of about a hundred people that have responded through email that are opposed to that project. But be that as it may, and I know that I'm the only council member that is opposed to it this far based on public comments that I've heard. And I fully expect that the AT&T building will be purchased by the city and will be demolished and that we'll have a grassy area there. Even if we do that, I want to bring to the council's attention another project that would actually get people off of the interstate and come downtown. And I have talked about this on social media, wildly receptive to it. But we, as a council, need to have a work session to discuss the feasibility, just the feasibility of whether we want to even pursue this, of having the Battleship Texas brought to birth at the Nature's River. Now, we can't discuss this right now because it's not a work session. So, I can't answer any of your questions if you have any. That's why we need a work session on it. But I can say a couple of things. One question was asked, well, will it even clear under the train bridge? Yes, it will. The train bridge can be lifted to a hundred and forty feet. The Battleship Texas is a hundred and thirty-one feet. Is the Nature's River deep enough? Yes, it is. The Battleship Texas drafts at twenty-eight feet. The Nature's River is forty feet. What about the cost of maintenance? The plan would be to bring the battleship, birth it, and then build a copper dam around the battleship like they've done to the USS Alabama, like they've done to some of the ships that they have at Sea Wolf Park in Galveston. The plan would be to do that and take the water out. And so, you'd actually have the battleship sitting on land with the illusion that it is in the water. Well, where would it go? What would it look like?
It would look like something like this. City Hall Civic Center, Civic Center parking lot, AT&T building, AT&T parking lot, Edison Plaza. This is to scale. That is where the Battleship could go if we were to bring it here. This other structure is another thing that I've talked about, which is a food truck park. And that's to scale also. That's overview of the food truck park in Maples, Florida. But just focusing on the Battleship, it's big, but it would fit there. And it has line of sight to the Nature's River Bridge. So, the people from the Battleship Texas Commission are interested in this because eighty-seven thousand five hundred people a day go over the Nature's River, Purple Heart Memorial Veterans Bridge. Their whole idea is to get more tickets sold. They are going to move it from San Jacinto. We're competing with cities like Galveston, Baytown, Corpus Christi. There is still time for Beaumont to do this. But we've got to get together if there is a desire by this council to move forward on this. The economic impact of this is estimated to be ten million dollars a year to the local economy. So, if there's a desire, I would ask another council member to agree to a work session. I have spoken with the mayor. She says that under the right circumstances, she would be in favor of this. Lots of work has to be done. Lots of questions still to be answered. We'd have to talk with people at the port, the navigation district, the county to get this done, the Coast Guard, the Army Corps of Engineers. I have had some preliminary contact with all of these people. But in order to go forward, we need to have the blessing of council. We need to have the desire of council. You want to get people off the interstate. You want to give them a reason to come down. This would do it. The people at Battleship Texas are saying they would uplight the ship so that you could see it at night from the interstate. Couple of billboards on the interstate. Look at the Battleship Texas, come see it. You'd get people downtown. So, regardless of this, if this building over here goes away, this is still something that we need to consider. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Councilman Getz. Councilman Durio?
AJ, thank you for taking one for the team in the dunking boot. None of the other councilmen had to get in there. Sure appreciate it. And Dean with Convention and Visits Bureau, I just want to back what they said. Y'all done an excellent job. That, that BoLimpics was, was awesome. They had a lot of people out here. I mean, it was everywhere. I had a great time myself. And I hope that's something they were going to do every year. And also, about the town hall meeting, I just want to thank the citizens of Beaumont that came out. I think, I think it was very successful. I think the citizens of Beaumont spoke. And I think they got a lot of information. And that's what they were there for. And that's it.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, okay. Again, Dean, great job this past weekend. I think there's going to be a super event coming up Thursday evening. Dean James will be playing at the Event Center, the Event Center this Thursday evening from, oh, okay, from five-thirty until seven-thirty. So, it's an opportunity here. Great jazz out there. And there are several events going on at Jefferson Theater. So, there, there are things going on in Beaumont. So, with that, unless there's some other comment, Madam Clerk, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you for coming.